Usually I can Google it right up.
I think it worked.
Did it?
Hello?
I see a blue light.
Okay.
What? Is that good? I see a blue light.
Uh, yeah, it's rolling. Okay.
All right. We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start our presentation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Hey, we'll have a roll call.
All right, um, Mayor Nolan here. Uh, Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Um, uh, Commissioner Ignosik is not here.
Is not here, but we still have a call. So we'll call this meeting to order. Um, announcements. I have the, uh, check report. Last week. Didn't have the very latest, but it's. Um, so, any, I'm trying to remember if there was something of note on here. Um, we got our, uh, first deposit for mixed beverage sales receipts, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and change. So those are monthly now, third Friday of the month. Let's see, yeah, stamps for, for you. Seems like there was something, oh, and then it's got the printing services for the flyers. Um, and then we got our deposit for sales tax receipts from the Texas Department. So overall, our, across all accounts, our, um, total account summary is a hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents. And I had, uh, uh, set up the transfers to, I set up transfers for two thousand dollars a month to go from our checking account into the Texas class account, uh, the Texas liquid assets account. And I, they don't have a recurring option, so you just set it up. And so I had set them all up for twenty twenty-three, and then I noticed that if you go in for twenty-three, go in like, oh, yeah, I have to set all those up again, so I did that, so they should be going in. Um, I did have, I did get a call from, uh, the Big Easy Tavern, they're having their chili cook-off on March thirtieth, I believe, and they would like a street closure for that. And I told them I would get them, I didn't have, I need to put that permit on the website where it can be, you know, downloaded and printed. But I was told that I would get that information to them too hard. Again, it's like March thirtieth, so we have at least one more. Um, some housekeeping things, just FYI. Um, I did the nine forty-one report, this is a quarterly report where we pay in to the social security and Medicare and federal, anything we take out of the paycheck, we don't get to keep it. We take it out of your paycheck and then we keep it. No, we, we have to pay that in, and then we have to match. So, um, that's a quarterly report, so I got that in for Q four of twenty twenty-three. Um, one thing that, if you're an employer, one thing that you, an additional payment that you have to make is to the Texas Workforce Commission for Unemployment, Texas Unemployment Tax. And I double-checked on that, because we haven't been paying that yet. I double-checked on that, and it's, uh, if you're a state or local political subdivision, you don't need to pay that in, so, uh, it's good that we haven't been paying that yet. That's a quarterly thing, and so, uh, just double-checked on that. Uh, so, twenty twenty-three withholding statements, the W two forms. Uh, I got Jessica to hers, I mailed out, mailed those to hers for the twenty twenty-three. Uh, the W three, which is the summary of all the W twos, um, that gets mailed to the Security Administration, uh, that I have ready to mail. Haven't mailed it out yet, but it's sitting on the counter. And I put it in the big envelope, because it says do not fold, so I, uh, put it in the big envelope. Paycheck to Jess. Um, I did get one state, one letter back, uh, the four that I mailed out, uh, regarding release of the Summit Street, Paper Street. So I've gotten one back on that so far. Um, this is all just housekeeping, I just want to get it on there, so we, we, uh, have it down, but all these tasks were taken care of. So I had, did renew the SAM.gov, it was, uh, coming up for this is for system for award management. So, um, that was expiring in February, so I went ahead and did a renewal on that, because you have to go through a whole bunch of documents and stuff again on that. Uh, I think I shared the calendar with you, Jessica, did you get a notice on that?
Yeah.
Good. Did you try?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Yay. Um, we got our, uh, statement for TMO IRP for our risk management, uh, intergovernmental, uh, risk pool. We, last year was seventeen hundred fifty-nine dollars, we budgeted eighteen hundred dollars. This year the bill was four thousand and seventy-eight dollars. And I talked to Chase Patton, uh, who's our rep with TMO IRP, and he said that we can do, there are certain things about, uh, law enforcement that we can, that's what other small cities have done, um, about law enforcement and car, um, costs. And there's another one that I put in there, um, uh, so I emailed Sheila Bauer, who's our person with TMO IRP, um, and said, hey, this is like one to two months of our income.
Yeah.
And, uh, we need a way to, to pull that down, and so this is what Chase had suggested, so, um, it's what I'd like to do and see what we can get it down. It probably won't get it down to what we budgeted for, but, um.
Is that something we need to get on the agenda to make a resolution about? Like what, what we need to do, or?
I don't think so. We, you know, we just, it's just part of our insurance. It was just the bill that came in, and it was four thousand and seventy. And so, uh.
But hopefully you can get it down from there.
Hopefully we can get it down from there, I mean, if I, if I, I can certainly, see what we can get it to. And if it's still over what our, a lot of budget was for it, then we'll certainly bring it to, to see, see what we want to do about that.
I'm really sorry, I forgot to bring out the audio recorder, and I'm afraid this won't work, and then I won't.
And then I got you your.
Yes, fabulous.
Calendar, and I have one for friends also, but, um, I don't. What, he had dental surgery?
Yeah.
Today, yeah, so, um, you know, that's always a lot of fun, so. So, uh, I'm hoping he's doing okay, there was one more thing that. Did, did anybody hear about anybody busting into, uh, the mailboxes?
Yes.
What was it?
I was there when the officer was there this morning.
Was it, so it happened last night?
What mailboxes?
During the weekend.
Said to the ones on the right.
The parcel boxes, which according to, I shouldn't say because it's gossip, had medical supplies in them, so some people were short their prescriptions. And also hearsay, uh, to other post offices, uh, Prairie Lee and Lueling.
At the PO boxes.
I know Lueling.
Not the PO boxes, the package boxes.
You know, when you go in, there's the big, the big doors, I say big, that size.
And did you walk in and see that they're broken open? And did not clear them today, is what I noticed when I was in the scene, and the keys. It's just what you can notice if you're used to seeing.
Yeah.
Now, you get the key in your PO box, you go over there, it's open.
Yeah, to open it up.
Parcel box. The keys are generally pulled out daily. And, uh, anyway.
I know that.
It appears as though it's left untampered with until more investigation, but I, that's only a, on my behalf.
Yeah, I, I heard something about that, but I didn't get any details.
And no, I didn't get the officer.
So I know that Lueling had been broken into a few months ago, but they busted all the ones with the glass and got.
Oh, the old PO boxes.
Yeah, the old PO boxes with the glass fronts, so they, that's what they had done with them.
Looks like we have a mail thief in the area.
Yeah. Parcel thief.
Parcel.
Interesting, again, by observation, what boxes they chose.
Yeah.
I think I know where you're going with that.
We're good, I just didn't know that was, uh, actually something that happened or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Um.
By the reports that I heard in person, yes.
And, oh, just one other, TML IRP got a call from Gary, has an interesting last name, it's named. Um, Gary. Forget where it was last, let's. Um, it, uh, with TML IRP, it's a workers' compensation audit information form, so. So, just housekeeping. Um, so, other announcements? Um. I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm tapped out.
I have a little announcement.
Yeah.
We had our first Homestead Cheese class last Saturday, it was amazing. Um, and we have, they're going to be every third Saturday of the month until, through the spring, till the summer. So I'll send you info if you, if you want to post it. There's, it's a small classroom, so classes fill up fast, but it was a lot of fun and amazing people came. Jessica filmed it, and yeah.
Are you having a full moon?
Uh, the full moon dinner this year is being, or this month is being hosted by Saoirse Learning Center over in Blanco. So we're trying to let other people kind of take the mantle of it, because it's a lot of work, I love doing it, but, you know, um, so we're doing quarterly, and then hoping other people will kind of start hosting other ones.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else, personal announcements? Get back tomorrow. All right, I have number two, public comments or discussion? Anybody bringing anything forward?
Anyone to see who came in?
You see? It's okay. Yes, sir.
Anyway, I'm James Ransdale, ready for Commissioner Precinct One, and I was wondering if you had, uh, any concerns that Commissioners should be aware of, or, uh, issues that need to be brought up that I can maybe learn to address?
Uh, we want our transfer station back.
Yes.
I've heard that a lot.
Yeah. And I have an update from Commissioner Seidenberger there also on that, so.
And Stephen German, I'll call your side on that.
Yes, yes, because they have a station over in Marion.
Yeah, in fact, if you stayed for the meeting, we're going to be talking a lot about that and ways we can try to figure out doing something of our own, because, uh, yeah, it's kind of a problem.
And as long as you're of the issue there, uh, that my county road remains the county road down the state highway, which is being used as, the volume of traffic and the weight of.
Yeah, these years.
I know it will.
How many, how many are, are, uh, running for precinct one?
Five.
Five.
Mr. Seidenberger is retiring, he's an open seat.
Okay, well, good luck. Well, thank you for coming, I can't think of anything in particular.
I mean, mainly the other waste transfer has been a concern of people around here.
Yeah, it's becoming a dumping site over there already, so, um, and along the roadways already. Um, so, yeah, it's a, that's a concern for, for our area, and we have some options that we put forth to Commissioner Seidenberger, and I did get a response from them today, you know, regarding that, because that is, that's a big one for us. Um, uh, as far as Commissioner items go, uh, I don't know that I have anything else that's come out too much for, um, Commissioner, I know that, um, we have a, an issue with, uh, Gander Soy Crossing, and I got an update from that. Yes, sir. Um, and Commissioner Seidenberger helped try to facilitate some stuff with that, but I think we may be finding some other options there.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
They go to our, they went to our church, and so, it was a great loss when they had the accident.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and that was, that was nothing but someone sitting at the stop sign. Uh, just, it was the stop sign, I had nothing to do with that big a crossing, but. Yeah, yeah, they were just sitting there waiting to turn right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and it's certainly going to be, from the information that I have, is that they can, they plan to extend that subway track the entire way of the railway, so it's not only us that is going to be facing ongoing issues with block crossings, that it's just going to, it's going to be that same for every community that has a, a crossing.
Simple, that's the same problem.
Yeah.
Plus the, the design of the road, the trucks could keep it front up on it.
And that, that is not becoming the sort of the issues here, the dragging, it takes the. And the fact that they use the double rail crossing instead of the single rail crossing. And the school bus drivers, there ain't enough, well, trucks, there ain't enough room for your truck if you're hazmat to stop and not be in the traffic.
I didn't have to call U P, you know, because there was a, a truck hauling bulldozers, stuck, you know, high center on the track, and called U P, and sure enough, a train pulled up right as I was calling, or had called, um, but it was able to safely stop, so, yeah, it happens. Um, well, thank, again, thank you for coming.
I'd just like to say one other thing that's been on our minds as a, a small city in a, in a quickly growing area, and I'm sure it's on your mind too, as you're thinking of, you know, your role and, uh, uh, you know, your, hopefully, future role, is the growth in this area, and, you know.
We're not endorsing anybody, hey, Jim?
Well, the growth in this area and what to do, but I didn't, at least for us, how to keep our small farming community kind of sim, the same, you know, uh, but, but we understand we have to grow and change, so that's kind of what we're grappling with as well.
Yeah, I worked, I worked ten years for the Road and Bridge Department along with the county, so I did work occasionally out of this yard here, but it's a unitized system now, where mainly it's argued with a budget, you know, how much money to put in the budget. I don't know if you guys follow the Commissioners' report, uh, I don't know, it happened. Years ago, we did a lot of work to Cardova to give it to the city, so we wouldn't, the county wouldn't have to maintain it anymore. And then, now they're going to make it a five-lane road, you know, with a four lanes and a turn lane, suicide lane, I call it. And somehow the county's going to have to pay half the bill. So I, I don't know how that works, but that's going to be a big part of their budget for roadwork for a little bit, just the four-horned yawn.
Yeah. Um, all right, item number three, old business consent.
Thank you for the flyers, and on the word of livestock, I did not follow, and totally unaware, but that used to be our main thing, and the livestock show that took, took place most recent. Our area pick up anything there?
We got grand champion lamb, reserve grand champion lamb, and third lamb.
Thank you.
I don't know about any of the others, but, uh, I do know about lambs, because my. Well, Will, yes, got grand champion and reserve grand champion, and my cousin Cambry got, uh, third overall.
Nice.
So I don't know about hogs and steers, or any lamb, I do know about lambs.
Thanks. Um, item number three, old business consent agenda item approval of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular commission meeting minutes, any updates or changes to that? I guess it will stand as approved. Item number four, discuss and consider Kingsbury Development Committee report and discussion. Is this, uh?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, the Kingsbury Development Committee did submit the, uh, report amendments on Friday nineteenth for the committee. Forgive me, but I, I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to do my best to recap it as best I can.
There you go.
Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you, Udo. Um, so one of the things that we were looking to do is to reprise our mission and vision statements, and so, um, Kingsbury Development Committee, KDC, seeks to promote and improve quality of life, enhancing the sense of community and preserving the integrity of our small-town identity and heritage. Our vision for the Kingsbury Development Committee, KDC, seeks sustainable growth that protects our natural and historic resources while preserving the integrity of our small-town identity. Some of the action items that we went through during that time included, um, key thoughts for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, that we're really looking to drive value to the Kingsbury resident, um, and that means through our communication, information, scheduling, and getting that, that, uh, different events and things really promote and support the Commissioners, particularly with the first goal of the jurisdiction, in, in order to increase our Kingsbury jurisdiction, since the passing of Senate Bill twenty, uh, twenty thirty-eight. And engage in education, that really means, um, Kingsbury residents, community engagement. We want to eliminate low-value or no-value activities, and we definitely want to automate and simplify as many things as possible. One of the new things, uh, item B, uh, the name change and role. The new Kingsbury Development Committee now replaces the Kingsbury Planning and Zoning Authority. Uh, we are now, the revision to the mission and vision statement was completed, and that was also submitted, and as I stated earlier. The other part has to do with raising a citizen's awareness, awareness as the eightieth Texas Legislative Session due to Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight, which has to do relating to the release of an area from a new municipalities extraterritorial jurisdiction, better known as ETJ, by petition or election. And so, um, the committee is in support of the Commission to, to work to, um, support and volunteer coordination, marketing, branding, and pushing and promotion throughout the calendar year of twenty twenty-four and twenty-five to do just that, among other missions, initiatives, such as the Waste Management Incentive and Updates. Shirley did provide us an update stating that, um, the City of Seguin has placed us Kingsbury petitions as a standing agenda versus, uh, basically moving the, moving it to granting a consent agenda item versus having to wait and appeal, so, uh, so that's some good news there. In regards to the incentive to increase the City of Kingsbury, uh, my colleagues, uh, or my, my counterparts, also talking about the recycling center and incentives and updates, uh, as well as the rainwater collection. Our partner, Tyler and Sam, did a really good update on that, and we're looking to try to filter that out some more with the Commission and get some dates and maybe, uh, some more information out there to the residents if they're interested. Same with the Waste Management, and Udo's done an exceptional job of providing and contacting Waste Management in the public sector, getting actual numbers and data, and so hopefully we'll be able to get that, um, out to everybody as well. We'll be able to get that written out, and we can, so we have it for everybody, so, uh, good job there. Um, we're also looking to, uh, the committee will be in attendance for the Hot Chocolate Social that is scheduled for February tenth. Please come out and see us, we want to be able to help everybody with their petitions to get out of the Seguin ETJ and join us. In addition, we're also looking at, uh, planning out the twenty twenty-four calendar. Uh, we, Lupe, one of our committee members, has volunteered to take on that task as the calendar. Uh, and so we're looking to plan out, um, the entire calendar year for twenty twenty-four. Some of the things that I would anticipate that Lupe will be asking the Commission, um, and to get for information is the dates that are already, of events that are already on the calendar, such as the fall holidays, when is that going to fall in twenty twenty-four? And things, right, and boos and prues, I just think of the immediate things that happen the last three months. We'll want to get those also on the calendar, so we can then just book them, so we don't double-book and make sure we're, we stay, you know, organized in that regard. New business, the twenty twenty-four, uh, calendar planning, and then of course, the communication platform inventory. The committee is looking at, um, all the platforms that we provide communication through, and I'm asking the questions as far as how can we use those better? Is there anything that we can do differently, and, um, and how do we can maximize those avenues that we already have? And then, of course, um, look to see what other free avenues of communication we might be able to, uh, utilize as well, to get that information out to the residents for that community engagement. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February thirteenth, at six thirty in this building. Subject, any comments, questions, or concerns, that is the Kingsbury Development, Development Committee report.
Thank you for all the volunteers. And thank you for reaching me on Tuesday, I'm about to ask her, you're still big Tuesdays.
It was just a, and I will make a note that, yeah, we're meeting. Today, because of the severe weather that we did have.
Inclined.
Yeah.
My choice of words are easy.
Um, any.
Thank you, Udo.
Any comments or discussion from the KDC report? Thank you so much.
Great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, item number five, discuss and consider update on possible trash collection site. Udo, I should have made a copy for you. Um. There is a, uh. Giving me that thousand-yard stare. Uh, I, it was an update that I got today from Commissioner Seidenberger. I had contacted him, I don't, you weren't at the last KDC, but I had contacted him regarding, uh, Kingsbury City of Kingsbury using or, or leasing or whatever, the transfer station. Um, he did say that they are using it for like multiple sites, and that, you know, he was somewhat open to it. He wasn't sure what the judge was going to say about it. Um, he did, and this, uh, today I did get back from him, um, a statement that did. I don't know, Udo, if you want to read it, or if.
Well, I do.
Okay. Okay, uh, basically.
The commission, I have a witness, three weeks now.
Ah, okay, well, he just talked to the judge, and that was the end.
Everybody's a little behind, but me, I guess. Yeah, I'm not going to sue, absolutely not.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, when I talked to him last week, he was going to get with the judge. And so I got back with him today to see what the judge had said, and, yeah, they've got, um, he, he said the judge was not adamantly opposed, but he wasn't in favor of it. His concerns that if he run out of volunteers in six months and closed the station, he would once again get, receive a ton of hate mail and phone calls.
No, it won't happen.
Huh?
All covered, will not happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to continue reading that, or for the people here?
A little reading.
Republic Services ran the site for several years, and the county paid them something like sixty-five hundred dollars per month to operate the station. They kept all the revenue collected from citizens, yet claimed they could not make a profit. They had a large trash compactor and mini dumpsters. We provided the site at no cost, and they paid the utility bills. Um, TCQ will require a trash permit and stormwater drainage review and permit. Not sure how long or what cost these permits will take. We often encounter multiple trash bags up at the gate, doing it whether you're open or not, when the station was closed. was closed. The operator was responsible for disposal of these bags. What days and hours were you thinking of operating the station? Since the station closed at the end of last October, most residents have obtained home trash service from one of the several local vendors offering these services.
Which we will quickly cancel as soon as this thing is open.
But that's not, again, recycling, that's trash. They have a significant impact on, it may have a significant impact on the number of folks utilizing the station in the future. We'll need to determine whether or not to accept contractor trash. We had a bargain utilizing the site for building materials and roofing shingles disposal. Now that, now they paid twice as much at the landfill. And that was from, and then there was one other point that, that we had brought up last week, or the week before in the, in the KDC, regarding this. Sorry, just a second. Oh, that, a vendor had come along after the RFP had closed and said, and just did not get their input in in time. Kind of suspect that it may be Republic, I don't know. But they were, in order to reopen the RFP for the transfer stations, they would have to, they have to wait a certain number of days, which is already passed, in order to reopen that RFP for this additional vendor that wants to actually, to man these transfers.
And for, time is crucial now.
Yeah, let's get this thing.
Yeah.
We need it.
For county or for?
County.
A rough way to ask.
No, no, for the city of Kingsbury. This is what I.
It sounds like a great deal to me.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a, this is a bargain. It's a bargain.
Let's take it.
So what, what, what I found out, since I have not heard back from you, no offense, because you told me on the phone three weeks ago, you will get back with me. Apparently you haven't heard anything. This is why you couldn't get back with me, and you had your hands full with paperwork I just heard in the beginning. No complaint.
Well, I did report on that much to the KDC, and then this I got.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. It is. So I went ahead and contacted Judge Kutcher and Commissioner Seidenberger, and I have very exciting news here right now, what you already said, but I have even better news, because Mr. Kutcher is willing to lease that property to us for one dollar a year.
Woo.
Yes. Well, which actually confirms it for free, but this is, this is how that goes. I think this is awesome.
Yes.
It's just a sixth lottery here right now. But it comes with a few curveballs. For example, this TCEQ permit, which we need for trash and storm water. We need to apply for this permit. I went further and informed myself about those permits, because I'm deep-sea fishing here without a bar right now.
I know of them, but, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so I contacted, they are called Texas Commission and Environmental Quality, short TCEQ. I contacted them. I'm emailing forward and backward, and now I'm leaning myself too far out of the window already, because I am entering ice which is too thin for me. I am representing the city of Kingsbury, not even being the city of Kingsbury. I'm a member of a committee for developing, and I'm acting like a manager or director for waste company of Kingsbury. Well.
Welcome to the world of volunteer.
People are friendly, so they give me all the information. I have the paperwork to apply for that permit here. I learned by contacting Texas Commission and Environmental Quality. So now I lost it. They sent me the paperwork to proceed and to, to, to sign over this permit. That still has been approved to be, to by, by TCEQ. So even when we get that permit, which is held by Texas Republic Service right now, they need to, they need to allow us to sign this over, and then we need to go to TCIQ and get that allowed by them. Even when they deny that, we might have to face, then we have to apply for a new permit. Right now, I have only the number one hundred and fifty dollars for this permit. I am not sure if that means that this is the reappriment for a new permit or the signing over for the permit. Anyways.
It sounds kind of cheap.
It sounds, it sounds cheap, but it says, you can, you can read that all up. Jennifer, she will make a few, she will make a few copies later, because I want to keep that original. So this is the first curveball is that TCEQ, what we have to cover. The second curveball is that Mr. Kutcher, he does not want to get any hate mails, what you mentioned already, in case we fail. Thank you.
We will not fail in this.
That means we need to make sure it is clear who runs that facility. It should not be confused for Guadalupe County being reopened. One way or the other, we need to make sure, we need to make a few decisions tonight in order for me to go ahead if I am appointed to. In my position, I'm simply not able to speak or represent the city of Kingsbury, which I already did. That brings me over to the decisions we need to make. First, we need a name for the facility. And I, I've done some thinking, and I think we should call this Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Station. Simply because Kingsbury, as for the city, municipal waste, because it is only for municipal place, waste, not for industrial waste, only municipal, only for people which are living either in the county or in the city. I'm sorry?
Residential.
Yeah, residential.
Residential.
And it's just a transfer station, because Superior Disposal will provide the dumpsters and.
What about recycling?
We cannot recycle. Recycle, this is his part. So we, we, we have a dumpster for cardboard. We will have a dumpster for plastic cans, which is absolutely on our side what we need. It will be pointed out what plastic is allowed to be coming in this dumpster. The rest is then household mail, trash. What we have a price for already since November now, from Dave, the owner, from Superior Disposal. So this is part one, we need a name. Part two is, we need to create a position like waste manager or waste director with an email and a telephone number. Email, for example, wastemanager@kingsbury.org, like we have major@kingsbury.org or commissioner. I think waste manager or waste director. This is point three and, two and three. Point four is, I would at least need verbal permission in order to go ahead and contact Republic Services in Arizona, they are located, to find support for the transfer. I am not sure if that fee is now a hundred and fifty dollars, or is it a hundred and fifty dollars to reapply? I don't know that yet. This is what I found out on the homepage. When you go through all this labyrinth there of things and questions what you have to go. And we need a sign before we open that Mr. Kutcher is safe and will not get any hate mails.
Yes.
And I think we should set up cameras.
For dumping.
To prevent that what Greg is talking about, what people dump.
Illegal dumping.
At the front gate there, and you might want to have a camera in the little cash box.
And a fee for illegal dumping.
Yeah.
And smile, you're on camera.
Exactly. Smile, you are on camera. They have to come in a truck. The truck has most likely a license plate. The camera is fifty bucks. We will have internet out there with for fifty dollars from Verizon, an internet connection, and I think we should, we should do that.
I agree.
Yeah, I want the cameras to prevent.
Abuse.
Abuse. As for the sign, it needs to state the name of the facility, contact phone and contact name, both most likely for the waste manager. In addition, it should state prohibited items like wet paint, oil, radioactive waste, industrial waste, chemical, biohazard, and so on. No bulky items. These are for the landfill itself. We have one. Pricing needs to be on there. We all know the procedure. And I would like the patrons who deliver trash to sign an affidavit that they do not deliver prohibited items.
Deliver what?
Prohibited items.
Okay, okay.
So make sure that is, there is no, whatever is not allowed in the, in the trash bag in there, you sign for it.
I like that.
Yeah. This is what I come up with so far. In addition, a little sugar on top, we might be able, might be on the edge to create some more jobs for Kingsbury.
Truly exciting.
Because when we open that thing up on a daily basis from nine to five, you need two people. We create two jobs. That's what I think.
That's great.
Go for it.
So what is our next step?
Next step would be, create an email.
First step.
Just to get approval.
Yeah, I need, I need permission. Then I will go ahead directly tomorrow and contact Republic Service, and I will, I will go for it, because there is probably five thousand extension lines. Find the right one who will be willing to sign that permit over, which is, it still should exist. That permit is, it was legit in October. I do not believe it is, it is gone by now. According to TCEQ, it is still legit. It is still an existing permit which is held by somebody. They don't know who that is, but the county does know. Apparently Greg told us it is Republic Service.
Deeper into the county, I don't know if you find out or not, but my understanding is it is a legal dump site. So it is a matter of permitting, not whether or not it's a legal place to have a dump. That's something that is maintained.
I can get you an email set up tonight. What do you want it, manager?
Sounds good to me.
Now, should we put her approval to give him a title? I mean.
Yeah, I'm Clay Keller.
Yeah.
What is the proper process?
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary.
I think it, I think it's just like when you create the development, Kingsbury Development.
It's a bonus.
It was a resolution, wasn't it?
Yeah, okay.
We did a resolution, and that's what it is, is a resolution by the city commission that Udo is appointed as a, not as an employee, but as a volunteer, but he is authorized, he is the waste manager, waste director, whatever you choose to call it. But it should just be a resolution. And with that, he is authorized to deal with any state agency or any company with respect to contracts. Now, I don't think you can go, you're not going to make a contract with Republic.
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't do that.
Without the commission, but otherwise you would be authorized if you do a resolution.
To discuss and represent.
Just to find my way through.
Since Jessica probably has to write up a resolution, can we go ahead and give Udo an email and get him rolling, and then?
Yes, but I don't see why she can't, she can write up a resolution after you.
Yeah, we can go ahead and go.
You just, you just do it.
Yeah, you're supposed to make the motion.
Say what it is. I resolve that.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we elect Udo as a waste manager for the Kingsbury Municipal Waste Management.
Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Station.
Waste Transfer Station.
All right, and I will second that, making Udo the, the waste manager for this transfer station. Any further comments or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right.
Fabulous. This is very.
Thank you very much.
I will get that. Do I have your normal email account? U D O N?
You do. You do.
Yeah, you should.
Kingsbury Municipal Wastes.
Yeah.
Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Center? Station? Is that, was that what you want to call it?
Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Station.
And we still have the logo on the line.
I think that, that covers it, because it, it sounds long.
No, no, I was just making sure I got it down right. No, I'm not, I don't, I don't disagree. I was just making sure I got it all right.
Could you cut verbiage, cut, cut the other requirements if you named it appropriate, appropriately to residential waste, so you don't come under the category of having to sign twenty miles long of what you do.
I don't get it. Don't matter.
I think you still got to have a sign twenty miles long.
I'm sorry?
I think you're always going to have to have a sign twenty miles long. People are always going to try to.
Yeah, well, we'll see what TCEQ has to say.
It's not legal not.
Yeah, I think, I think additional mailbox or something like.
I don't think you need anything except a shotgun over there.
On camera.
You don't, so it's going to be in the, in the resolution, well, not in the resolution, but I don't think you have to do more than that. I don't think you have to put it in the name.
No, no, but I said, if you, if you do one thing, it abhors another, is what I would say.
Uh, excellent. I will, thank you for.
That's amazing.
It's already inside.
Thank you, Udo.
Totally shout out to Udo.
Yeah.
See how far we can go.
Yeah, absolutely.
The next agenda item we've got. All right, we'll talk about that.
Oh, and, and one thing I should have, we're talking about cost. One thing I should have brought up under announcements was that, I don't know if you saw, but I went ahead and moved our pro boards, our message board, to a paid, six bucks a month, because I looked at several other options. They weren't nearly as good as what we have on the free version. So what I took was, I found out that they do have additional plans. I upped it to the bronze plan. I think there's a copper and then a bronze and a gold platinum.
So it's easier to navigate?
Well, it's, it's, the, the number of files goes from three to eight. Yeah, and then the file size goes from one bag to three, to three bags. So that, that was a real limit on my part. So I think it's six bucks a month. I feel like people keep complaining to me that they have trouble, like, logging into it or something. I haven't had trouble with that, but, I don't know. Have you had trouble logging into it?
Yeah, but now I'm getting better internet, so it's a little bit easier.
Yeah.
It's just the old guys like me that have trouble. And I, I.
Well, Tyler says that he has trouble logging into it.
Oh, so, yeah, I have had trouble too.
I don't know. It was not the most computer-y dude. All right. Item number six, discuss and consider plans for possible Kingsbury recycling program. This is.
So, yes, this is highly exciting news, because Balcony's recycling can actually work with us to buy our recycling from us, and the thing that they really want is a place, a concreted area where they can pull their trucks and grab and go. So I don't know if that needs to be stated when you talk to, you know, if, but there's probably, that would be two different companies maybe coming in and out. Yeah.
I mean, it's just money in his pocket. It's less money in his pocket probably, because most likely he would, in my opinion, like us now, resell the recycling. He only has to transport it, and this is why he wants a one hundred and fifty dollar cover charge for it, which he would hide in our waste containers, in, in the, in the household trash, because I would try to let the people bring cardboard and plastic for free, but hide those three hundred dollars for the two dumpsters in our household trash.
Well, you wouldn't have to do that if we can, so, yeah, again, Joaquin is with helping set up that, and that's in San Antonio, so it's, I think it's pretty close. They would be able to pick up from us. And still haven't gotten word whether you can come talk to us, but I did some research on the grants. There's also grant money from three different organizations. Our Texas, Our Future, and then there's Keep Texas Beautiful. I think the other one's a water one, but both of these are, are already closed for twenty twenty-three, but they'll be open again for the spring. So, you know, if we go ahead and secure the place, and, you know, we can at least get a contract for them to buy waste from us, and we might even be able to get a grant to help us set up like a, some kind of system where, you know, it can be neatly separated or something.
So what is, yes, Dennis?
Yeah, backtracking, it's like Donna Dodgen today on KWED. Look at the existing things that you had that you aren't enforcing and or using before going and making new resolutions and, it was a good thing this morning. And from the area that you like to, we find easier to get along with on scene.
I have a question for, for Udo and, and the commission. Do you think it's necessary to put into that TCEQ application that you're going to be conducting recycling out of the same site, or is, does that fall under waste transfer?
Waste transfer.
It falls, it's a part of waste transfer. I, I think so too. It seems to make sense. So I just raised the question. But anyway, those TCEQ people are pretty particular about what you do, so it might come up, but I don't, I don't think, I think it falls under waste transfers.
We, we most likely will not make any changes to use of the property. I'm not sure, when I understood Shirley right earlier, you mentioned that. I'm not sure, when I understood Shirley right earlier, you mentioned that RAC said, uh, that they had set up for drywall, or was it the idea to set it up?
No, for, oh, that there would be some, they do not accept that kind of stuff, but then there would be certain what they call amnesty days where those kind of things would be accepted. That, that, that's something that the county has.
It's just their process, their procedure.
Yeah.
Our, our use of this property would be easier than the use it had been before.
Correct.
Cause I would, I would not take any bulky items.
Correct.
I don't have a word for this in English, you know?
Yeah.
No, no fridges and stuff like that, no tires.
Correct. And then partnering, and then partnering with, with Allison's project, with the recycling, all in that same location at the transfer center is beautiful. It's a beautiful marriage.
I think so too.
So I think, and I, and I, so, so then we could do, we could do the residential waste then, and avoid the commercial industrial, and then have all the, all the recyclables effective assisting the residents as well as trans-
And transferring that out of our area.
Exactly, yeah.
And, uh, you know, just to get a little bit crazy, there is quite a bit of land there, and they also mulch trees, and if we're not gonna be collecting nasty tires in construction, we could do more. Make it into a frisbee field or something for Kingsbury.
I, I would suggest that, that, as you continue moving on, both with the waste management and partnering with Allison with recycling to utilize that location that you definitely connect with Sam for any legality and like application and processes, and they go back to run through Sam, cause he'll be able to help you with, some of that verbiage in those applications is very legalese. So I, I would encourage Sam to, to be a part of that to help.
I'd like to help anything I can do, but I think Udo's got the applications and he's up and running, so.
But you're, but you've got support, is what I'm trying to say.
I, I need that for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
If you give me your cell phone number, it doesn't matter, I asked for that.
Next step.
Okay, next step. So, uh, so next steps for the recycling program are to, uh, I guess I'll reach out to Balcones. I'll reach out to Balcones and maybe Udo, uh, do I, do I have your email, probably through the, okay. So Udo, I will start an email with you and reach out to Balcones, just so you can be CC'd on that, and we'll start a conversation with them about all of this and get things rolling.
In the next couple of days, my email will change then to waste manager at Kingsbury.
Yes, oh, then I'll reach out to, yes.
The easiest way.
Yep. Yeah. So I guess when that gets changed, let me know.
Yeah. All right, item number seven, discuss and consider plans for February 10th. Kingsbury Hot Chocolate Social, one event to educate and assist area residents concerning SB 2038 and the available process for moving a property from NITJ. Jessica.
Well, I have the go-to on this one. Uh, I guess we, we talked about this at the development meeting, but, um, I mean, the mailers went out, Allison and I got those put together, and, uh, I got mine in the mail and in the PTO.
I did too.
And, uh, I mean, one thing that I, I don't know who's making the hot chocolate and.
That's what, I think we should, we should delegate, yeah.
I had some other questions too about logistics, but it, well, yeah, that's what we should, I think we should figure all that out.
And actually, uh, now that we have all this exciting information, a table with the new waste manager behind it, talking about all of that exciting stuff, and, and then also, we need a notary table too, don't we, for an application and stuff? So we need to kind of, do we need to?
Also thinking about setup, uh, set up and tear down crews for, for the event and, and helping with the venues. And then also, do we want to create like a cheat sheet topic for everyone, all the members are gonna be providing education, so we have consistent message, make sure that we, I mean, is that something that members would want? So we have equal, consistent message with all the residents? Um, and then of course, then I had the question like, Jessica, well, who's buying hot chocolate and, uh, when? And, uh, do we have the equipment to do so, and cups and supplies and?
Right.
There's, there's a button for that, Shirley, I mean. There's a miscellaneous.
We've.
That's the item.
We've, we've kind of.
That's why I'm trying to get Sam to.
We have, we have some budget there, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I guess we'll make a shopping list.
All right, I mean, does somebody have like, uh, I mean, what, what do we even want this hot chocolate to look like? Is it just like, is this a conversation for here? I don't know where else to have it. But, uh, you know, are we getting packets of powder?
Options?
Are we?
Many different flavors, packets that have hot water?
Do we just need a big hot water thing, and does someone around here have one of those?
Maybe these are things we take offline.
All right.
Yeah.
It says coffee on it, but.
Let's do that.
It's being, the thing is like.
He has one, Udo.
Oh.
Ten, no, it's maybe not 10 gallons, but six gallons, seven gallons of, of chocolate would fit in there. We have a, um, is it, yeah, spout on the bottom, it's stainless steel, has a lid, it's insulated. I can, I can provide that, absolutely.
Cool, and the fire department might have another one if we wanted to do like hot water for it or something.
Is this something that plugs in?
No.
So you would heat the water somewhere?
Well, you, you can put it on a, on a stove, on a hot plate, uh, and then because of circulation of the heat in there, it's physics, uh, the chocolate will not burn, it will circulate in there and, and stay warm.
Okay, so we would need a hot plate.
I have a burner, but it's too old. I would not trust that, no propane connection, you know?
I, I, I would like to support Shirley on this push, so this needs a conversation, it just got a lot of detail.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Do we need a little meetings for this?
I think, I think we need to get the, the committee together.
I would be happy to meet with, uh, you guys, you know, and we'll fig, we can figure it all out.
Like us?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we already got together to do the flyer, and legally Shirley and I can't hang out outside of this thing, so, you know, it has to be one or the other of us, so I'm, I'm happy to, like, we could all get together and plan it.
Figure out the logistics.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and start an email train.
Yeah, and then we can see about, um, whatever items we don't have, we can see about making a request for, from folks to volunteer if they may have the items. And then if not, then we can also plan alternative tables, tablecloths.
Yeah, I do too, I have loads of stuff.
And I'm sure together we can, we can come up with something.
Well, Udo's thing will probably come into play.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get, yeah, so, so we'll get with Udo's.
I'm sure I have stuff, and the fire department, I think, does.
I'm gonna say now the fire department's got those big containers that can, that can dispense hot, cold beverages.
Okay.
And then maybe we can do organic hot chocolate and organic dark chocolate.
All right, that's good.
I know you are both foodies and so, I don't know that I should be the one in charge of hot chocolate, cause I'm not.
I think the easiest way would be the package, and I'm fine with that. Let's keep it simple, the idea is to have the conversation.
Okay.
Anyone using milk or water for the chocolate?
Or water, cause I don't know if anyone's got lactose intolerance and stuff like that.
No, we could have some.
But we can, we can talk about it, we can talk about all of that.
We're already cleared on permit, or we don't have one, have to have one because we are the city?
It's inside Shirley's building, so it's not a street closure.
Um, it's just hot chocolate. One thing that has come up since we did the agenda was trail riders.
Oh, yeah, what's that?
Uh, February 5th, a couple weeks, and we have provided them breakfast in the past, had a trail, trail riders breakfast, cause we're talking about money for things like that. So, I would like to have a, I can, I can foot it if, if need be, but I would like to have a breakfast.
I think it's a wonderful thing to offer, the trail riders are really cool and they should be supported.
Yeah, I would like the city of Kingsbury to support them, they, they give us a nice plaque every year, and so, um, well, well, take care of that, but, all right. Okay, so, yeah, if, if we wanted a separate meeting to hammer out details, we could do that.
I mean, I guess if you wanna hand this over to me, Allison.
Yeah, that way we can just email it, I mean, cause then if you're, it's gonna be at your place, that way we don't have to, we're all pretty busy. I don't know if I have time for a meeting, meeting, but.
I guess it's just gonna be coordinated email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yay.
Uh, item number eight, discuss and consider options for communication of the KDC with regard to the Open Meetings Act. And I think this was something, frankly, we kind of.
But Sam was not here last meeting, that's why we were, it's on the agenda, I think.
And Frank brought it up.
Yes.
Brought it up at the Development Committee meeting last Tuesday, or two weeks ago. Frank, Frank just asked the question of how do we, if we're sitting there deliberating with the Development Committee about issues that are going to be presented to the commission for its approval, how do, how do we do that and comply with the Open Meetings Act if the city commissioners are engaged?
Are also on the committee.
And they're on the committee, and they are engaged in emails with the committee. And as in the, uh, but because then all three commissioners are members of the Development Committee, and so therefore, uh, if you start emailing, what are we going to call our mission statement? And you start opining and giving opinions about, I think it should say this. Can we do that in emails between the commissioners and the committee without violating the Open Meetings Act? And, and I think that gets, uh, it gets right up close to, uh, being a violation if those emails are taking place in something that is not posted and is not, not posted and it's not set up. Now, uh, there's a, the, the way to deal with that that we've, uh, historically followed is ever since we did the message board, that's because my understanding is TML, their legal department, and, uh, Art Martinez Deodoro, our other co-counsel, city attorney for the city, has said that using the message board is permissible if you limit those emails to the, uh, through the message board. Well, and then I think, and the reason Frank asked the question is that was not going through, those were not going through the message board when we did the emails. And, uh, so, uh, I, I think that if you restrict it to the message board, but, and that's not easy because a lot of people can't use it, or, well, I shouldn't say that. I don't, I don't know whether the message board is working up to the point where you could do it. And that's because, my fault, because I haven't been engaged in the message board, I haven't been able to log on and follow this. And so, uh, if we, we can do it in the message board, I think, because then, as I understand it, the reason that's legal is because the message board is open to every, everybody in the world. The whole internet is watching, can watch that message board, just like a city commissioner.
That's what makes it applicable with.
Right. And that's what makes it, uh, okay. But if we do emails outside of that message board.
Personally now.
Then we, uh, then, then we maybe, uh, you, you come up on the possibility of, of violating the Open Meetings Act because you're deliberating about what we're going to say now, uh, and, and what you're going to do at the next meeting, and what you're going to approve. Now, there's another way of doing it besides the message board, and that is, uh, if, and I, I think, and I'm still working this out, and we might, and we need to continue to look at this question. One answer is to just restrict those emails to the, the city commissioners. When they're engaged in, uh, a process like planning hot chocolate or planning the Development Committee, should probably refrain from saying, this is what I think we should pass. They, they should just be on there for information purposes, and, uh, but then that, that comes back to the thing we talked about with Nelda last year or two years ago, is you can't, we cannot, uh, tell her in an email, next week, I, we're going to pass a resolution that says such and such. And then, and then she, uh, she writes it up that way, and then we come in and deliberate and we say, well, wait a minute, no, we're gonna tweak that, we're gonna change that up. Well, everything that we do in the meeting is just fine, but it's that predicate of move, the emails leading up to that that constitute, I think, deliberation on an action to be taken by the city commission. I think that's what Frank was talking about, and I'm sorry, he's not here to speak for himself because, uh, I, I'm sure I've fallen short and I haven't covered all of the stuff that Frank wanted to address. But that is my thought to the commission, and, uh, yes.
So I have a question. I always thought, when I look at municipality organization structures and charts, and, and how their members are made up, uh, I yet to find where commissioners are part of the committee.
Oh, in, in this one, in this case?
Well, this, this in general. And so, and so, I, so I just wonder, is that, is that, is that, I mean, I just assumed that it was allowable, and I didn't, I didn't raise any question, but I'm wondering if, if, if we didn't have the commissioners on the committee, then would just the simple report suffice the Opens Records Act from the committee, since we're not obligated under the, because we're volunteers, and this is our personal email address, and whatever, we're trying to work through these, these, these issues.
You're right.
Right, but, but this, but where it gets into that murky, murky waters having, is then, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to solve the, the, the concern, and it's a legitimate concern regarding the Opens Records Act. So, and, and one of my points is, is that when I have looked at others municipality structures, commissioners court, city, and, and are larger or small, I've not found any where the commissioners of that municipality are also committee on, 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 or members on the committee. So, and I think that's one way that they alleviate that whole, is my point.
Well, that's the staple side, that was, basically their city council was their committee.
Yes, and, well, that, that is one way to address it, but we're dealing with what is, and when they set up the Kingsbury Development Committee, they specifically said, all three of the commissioners are members of this committee.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that at all, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it was something I noticed, and I'm wondering if that has any legal stance, and it's something that we should be concerned about. That's all I was, all that I was bringing up.
I, I, I thought that, and, and I don't have that much experience representing public municipalities or the county or anything, uh, but I've seen, like, the city of San Antonio does set up committees, and they'll put one, one city council person on that committee with, with the citizens. And in that case, that commissioner does not, the, oh, that city councilman does sit in the meetings and engage with the other committee members, but they do not share emails of what we're going to do with the other city council. They just take it back, the committee makes a report, and then all of the city commissioners or council, whatever, can address it. But, uh, but anyway, your point is that, that is one.
I do know that one of the challenges that I had from committees speaking is the limitations of the message board, the lack of capacity for, for attachments and just the limitation, and then the confusing of, if you're gonna start a thread, then there's, and there's multiple folders, not everybody replies back, and it seems to be a little, so, so, so. It gets confusing because it's not very organized very well, and it's just the limitation of the application itself.
It's slow.
Right, and, and it just really slows down.
Down, people can't get anything done because of those limitations. People can't get anything done because of those limitations. And it's, it's got a good purpose, the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, I agree.
But it has, it's, and that's why city councils have to do second readings and third readings on resolutions and ordinances. It's because they want to have time to, they can't talk about it in email reporting.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd be interested to hear what other solutions might be able to, to work around and make sure that we stay in compliance with the Open Records Act. I'll be looking forward to hearing those, those, those suggestions. And I think in the meanwhile, we just, we see commissioners and mayor just have to, probably don't get offended if none of us respond to, to emails or we're all on them. I guess that's the safest way to do it.
Then you're going to have to come, like we did last time. We walked in and said, okay, this is what we're talking about. One, two, three.
Well, that's what, and that's the point of the agenda.
On the agenda.
Right.
So if that had been the first time, you're probably just going to have to go slower because in the meeting, you had that meeting, the Kingsbury Development meeting, and then you can bring it to, and we haven't yet brought any of it to the committee.
I have. Today I have.
Oh, we did. Today.
Yeah, that was, that was my report on the, on the, on the agenda item.
All of that is fine, but I think it, it's going to have to be where they can see what it is the committee members is and the facilitator is presenting, but they just need to-
Not engage.
Not engage, like Allison said. I, I think that's the safest way, but that means it's going to take longer to get there and get something done. And that, and the people of Kingsbury want things done quickly, but we have restraints. And we're limited in how we can do that because of the Open Meetings Act.
Got it. Okay.
But anyways, that's my, my spiel. I think Frank will probably, I think will probably want to reconsider this. And Frank wants to address this, I think, when he comes back to a meeting.
Congratulations on the sidebar that Udo and Sam had as far as Udo doing a specific email account for the position.
No, that's all I have.
All right, great.
And something that probably could have waited my little thing to put in here, which is the upgrade of the, of the pro boards. We'll see if that, we'll see if that, that helps. You know, with some of this, you know, because we try to attach a file, we try to attach minutes and, yeah. And so it may, it may be helpful. Item number nine, discussing and consider citywide rainwater collection update. And that is Tyler, who is not here. Not here at the moment, so should we, any updates on this?
Well, did Sam, did you have, were you working on?
There's nothing further since Tyler and I were both at the Kingsbury Development Committee meeting and that, we've not talked and I don't have any specific concrete actions that have taken place since, or anything further to report at this time on that particular project. As, as it was, as I reported, Tyler reported at the last meeting of the Development Committee, we're standing by to see about applying for both grants and loans. And we're looking at loan packages to see if we can finance rainwater collection off the roof here and whatever aspects, other aspects.
And have you guys been to the volunteer fire department meeting to, to talk to them about it? Has that happened yet or not?
Uh, no, no, because we wanted to go further with innovative, and, and, you know, innovative water solutions Tyler mentioned is in the preliminary stages of working with Tyler to create a plan, a business plan that we can attach to the grant applications. So that's what we, we have to come up with a business plan. And then when we do, I think that's when I think it would be, and of course, the volunteer fire department is very interested in this thing. I mean, because it's their building.
Yeah, the business plan will be required for the application.
They've got to have their permission and we're going to have to have a lease agreement with them. But until we have a business plan and we know what we're going to spend, how many tanks and how we're going to pour the concrete for the slab and all of that, we, we don't know what to tell the volunteer fire department that lease would look like.
Cool.
All right, and then you and Tyler have been going through this to our, is it Tyler up on what, everything you were just reading there?
With, with our-
With regard, oh.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't understand.
Tyler's kind of our point on this, so is he up to date on everything that you were just?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think what I remember is that Innovative Water Solutions was supposed to come back to Tyler with, with this plan and I think that he hasn't heard from them in a while. So it would be good probably for him to give them a poke, remind them.
And this innovative guy is that Tyler's talking to. We think he should be affiliated with the Water Development Board. He knows the bureaucracy and he knows the processes. He knows how they like for a grant application to look. And that's the important part. He'll tell us how to structure that grant application with, and he's going to have drawings from what Tyler tells me.
Cool.
Yes, ma'am. We're, Tyler and I are talking. That's what, that's the status.
Okay. Item number 10, discussing and consider train crossing at Gander Slough Road. I did get, finally got in touch with Mr.-
Oh, real quick, Tyler says, I reached out to Innovative Water Solutions and I'll have more info this week. Exclamation point.
Cool. Yay.
Thank you.
Why is he not here?
Thank you.
Sitting home on TV, you know.
He's multitasking.
Incidentally, there's something that we just heard that it's questionable about doing, but great that at the committee meeting of one committee, you were discussing the other issues. Thank you.
Okay. Train crossing Gander Slough. One of the, we've talked about many options there. One of them was, just quick background in talking with Raquel Espinoza with UP about making sure that they break trains, blah, blah. She mentioned that there were some signs in Eagle Pass that said, train across tracks when flashing. I did get with, she had never seen before. She got with the city manager of Eagle Pass and it turns out those were put at my text dot. They had nothing to do with the city. I asked Will Lockett about having, you know, what, get some information on what, if that's something that, you know, we could do. It's, it's not going to solve the issue, but it could be helpful. If we had something, you know, back at Woodrow Center, maybe on Gander Slough, said, hey, there's a train across the tracks up ahead. I sent him a picture. I went on Google Maps and found, just happened to drop in at the right place. I kind of calculated, dropped in the right place and found one of their signs there at Eagle Pass. Talked with Will Lockett, who is our person with text dot. After yesterday's discussion, I contacted a friend who used to work in Del Rio and Eagle Pass and she knew all about these train signs. Apparently Eagle Pass has a roadway that is often blocked by the trains. So the sign system was installed to allow motorists to use another route that was a bridge over the tracks.
Information at somebody else's expense. Good.
It was more than a sign installation. The sign is located west of intersection US 57 and FM 375 in Eagle Pass. It is actually over 4,000 feet away from the actual train crossing. A radar detection was installed to detect rail cars stopped, stopped blocking Main Street. I guess the English was in the email and, but we, we know what he means. And a signal was set to the sign to trigger the lights, which allows motorists traveling west to take Garrison Street, US 57, which has a bridge over the train. I'm not sure if this helps your situation, but I'm going to meet with you again and discuss. Let me know when you believe the bell. So if, if, you know, this is one of the arrows in our quiver, if this is one of our options that we're looking at. If I were, to get back with him, I, I would have to Google Earth it and see how far. I, I would think somewhere like Gander Slough at Woodrow Center or maybe closer to, to the crossing would be helpful. I don't know. You live in that area. Do you have a?
Well, if you write, put it at the key connection where Woodrow Center meets Gander Slough, that would be perfect. Because this is, after there, nobody, nobody can go anywhere but over the railroad track.
That's true.
If that radio signal from the track would go all the way to Woodrow Center, Gander Slough there, it needs to be a radio signal, I believe, right?
Yeah.
I don't run, I don't think that they would want to-
Signal, it's just going to tell it.
Yeah, just tell it. Yeah. And then the question I-
Yeah. So I would, I could, I, I'll get back with Will.
Yeah.
That's our-
It will be helpful.
Yeah.
Only need to find out, is, is that train then stopping or is it rolling?
Is it going across the tracks? Is it moving? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's the question. Yeah. We had that last time already.
And then again, we've always talked also about, you know, a webcam, you know, whether that would be helpful or not. And, you know, of course, that means having sometimes internet somewhere where we could see the train, which is always a, yeah.
In addition.
I, because I don't want the city of Kingsbury to have to pay for it. We're not the one blocking the crossing.
That was a beauty of it.
Well, yeah, I mean, the camera is, like, like what I have on my property. They, they recharge themselves by sun by daylight. And I got a signal here with my, with my cell phone, cell phone signal. And you only have to download the application on your phone. So everybody needs then that application on his phone.
Yeah.
Do you always check your app before you leave the house is then the question, right? But you have a chance. Yeah, that, still is a chance because it takes three minutes up Gander Slough to come to the railroad, right? It is, I don't know, there is, of course, always ifs and when and-
It's not a, it's not a perfect solution.
It is not. It is.
Are you Ellen Watts from the Facebook? He said on Facebook before he showed up, let's talk Union Pacific. What do you have to, can we hear?
I have a fair amount of input on this and I'd like to go.
Ellen, yeah.
I've lived on Gander Slough since the end of 1994. Once the side track was put in, we never had to call when they cross a block cross line. Not once do I remember it. Mr. Blenwinkle, he may have a time or two, but he lived here a lot longer than myself. Once they put the side track in, it become an issue. I took, I took the reins on this little issue probably over two years ago. I spent hundreds, maybe a thousand hours on the phone when Union Pacific is huge. We are small. So I've reached out to Udo, Mr. Blenwinkle, Blake Burling. We actually got together and put up signs to make our numbers larger, to create their life.
Help.
Yes, miserably. I've acquired lots of phone numbers and I have an email on my phone that I got secondhand and I should not have. I finally reached the right person at some point and he actually reached out to me. And it got better for a moment and I think we could all agree. But then they get complacent and unless we get larger numbers, it's not going to change. We had a meeting at the crossing with Raquel. She was the only one that showed up from Union Pacific, even though I was told there would be three there. She was the only one that showed up. I really felt bad for her because she called, I'm sorry, H E double L, because we, we're suffering.
I've told Raquel that the common perception is that they're UP and we're not. And that's-
They're huge.
Yeah.
You can't fight the insurance company and you can't fight Union Pacific.
And David Baker was, when we were discussing some other committee, we were talking about that, that now former owner of Pat Baker Company. And, you know, of course, that's what they deal in is, is railroad derailments and, and stuff. And he was saying, City of Houston is fighting and they've got two and a half million people affected by it. And they're not having any better luck than anybody else now. I don't know all that's for sure, but that's, that was his information.
A small inside and there's smaller, or I can't say smaller entities than ourselves that have passed, you know, trains, you know, block crossings. And they have gotten it passed. While we can't do it with all the calls and stuff, but you mentioned the text dot number. We had, I would guess, a hundred to 200 reports. I know my family alone had over 50. And when I called in and I actually demanded a safety issue and it wasn't in fact a safety issue, I wanted to speak to someone. There wasn't a report one of that text dot with Union Pacific. So those wires never crossed. It took Raquel going and doing some research and finding all those calls. And she was able to tell me, she said there was 70, I hate to say a number, like 72 in the last 10 days. And I said, but why can't we get this? Why can't we put a, some kind of report, monitor on the crossings? Raquel told me there is a monitor on that crossing. Every time those arms are down. Every time those arms are down and they're blocked, it's recording it.
And I get to listen to it.
And so it does exist. Now, why they don't pay attention to it? Again, it got better for a moment. And then it's like they forget about you. And I, I had wanted to go the other way because it's, and it, it is. It just makes me angry and it ruins your day. So you, you go five, 10 minutes out of your plane. The big concern, and I took it to them, to Raquel, to Mike, to- The other fellow, I can't remember his name right now. He was very poor at returning messages. Mike Soriano was the one I got the most respect from. I can give you his phone number.
And he's with, he's with you Pete? He's with you Pete?
Yes. He is the Southern Regional Safety Manager. So what I took to him, and that's what we all need to get on board and do. When we call 911 from 12:31, from 12:35, from 10:30, Gander Slough, even Woodrow Center, Udo, guess where they're going to respond from? Saginaw.
And here, Kingsbury Fire Department too.
Well, I mean, ambulance, they're coming out of Saginaw.
But yet-
Another 15, 20 minutes is a big deal. If your house is on fire, Kingsbury can't get there because we're blocked. Now they've got to go all the way around. When it's tried, the railroad sets fire. It burned up into the back of my place in 1997, burned through Blake Burling's place. We fought fire for three days. Kingsbury can't get there. We got to wait for looting. Kingsbury can't get there. We gotta wait for Looney, Southeast Fire Department out of Cole County. We gotta wait for them to get there.
Apparently somebody needs to die first before something.
And that's what I told Raquel. I said, if it takes someone dying before you pay attention to this. The lady that lived right across the track moved here to be closer to the EMS, right across the crossing. She is the furthest one to get to a detour, to get away from a block crossing.
She's actually had her home health people crawl under the track to visit her. Because it's, it's blocked instead of going all the way around to Woodrow Center.
I will be glad to show you the email. I will not, I won't hand it off until it came from a second party. You can read it, but that's where I got the phone number from Mike Soriano. And he is, he has been the best contact. And I, I told him, I said, if I call you and you don't answer, guess what? And he did not answer, but he called me back before I could go any further with it. Maybe we all need to be a big, we need to be a bigger number if we want something done about it. And I, if y'all don't live on Gander Slough, you don't know, but Mr. Blenwinkle lives right next door to me and it is frustrating.
I think, you know, when this was really being an issue, when we were contacting state representatives, we kept contacting our county commissioner, Kempole, we contacted, uh, Ted Cruz.
Yes, that's, that's when we got a response.
That's when we got a response.
That's when we got.
We talked to Ted Cruz's office. The main thing is it's a, it's a big safety issue and that's what my biggest concern is. Is if there is a problem on the other side of the track. And it's especially frustrating when there's three or four cars that are blocking Gander Slough and the Kingsbury Crossing is open.
Yeah, I've measured between the two crossings downtown and let them data that information of how far that is, where you can, how far you can pull up, pull up the train to unblock Gander Slough.
And then most of the time they can't and you still have Red Bull pit open.
There's two, there's two crossings in Kingsbury. We're aware of that. Red Bull pit, road, that area and Kingsbury Road. And my frustration as well is huge. We don't have one car blocking us. You can't even off-road it because I would, but, but you can't. But you go all the way to Woodrow Center and you go back to go west on ninety and you find out that both of these crossings are wide open. I've gone east and there's a private crossing that's not even used anymore that I brought to their attention and it's not blocked.
That's what the biggest thing is at this point, since they built, they extended the site in east. A train should be able to stay east of town, east of Gander Slough and not block any public crossings.
But what I was told from my party is they found out that it was poorly designed and it won't accommodate the length of trains. And when I brought that to Raquel's attention, she said, well, some of these trains are as much as two and a half miles long. That's not our fault. We shouldn't suffer because your labor shortage, fuel costs, this, that, the other. Uh, uh, inter- uh, international transportation, this and that. And that's where Union Pacific comes in as big and large as they are because they have so many people on their side that us sixty, eighty, a hundred people don't matter. Our lives are expendable because they're moving freight. I get it. The whole world's depending on that railroad, but at the same time, why should we be calling for emergency response? Because they are reluctant to stop within A and B where they're supposed to.
So the side track is there, it's gonna stay.
No, it's going.
The side track is not the problem. The problem is, is if they will not set their trains to stop on the side track because there's no access for the out of power engineer to get a ride.
Well, according, according to Raquel, they are, they have directions. I know they don't follow them. They have directions to break the train if they're gonna be there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this email.
Okay.
We are having an issue with blocking the crossing on Gander Slough. Gander Slough MP one, one six three point two, Kingsbury. If you do not fit inside the Kingsbury without blocking this, sorry, I don't have a scan, this crossing, hold off and wait for the dispatcher to let you know that the train you are meeting is approaching. If we need to tie the train down and block the crossing, approval will be, will need to come from lane support at HTC. Any questions, reach out to me. And that is Mike Soriano. That came from him and I got it by accident. But there was a period in there that they were breaking trains. But it was, it had a very short shelf line. But most of us out there have resorted to going around. You just, it just makes more sense. You just rearrange your schedule and go around it because it'll just make you angry. And it's the school bus, the thing. I've seen the school bus stopped on the other side and I told Raquel about that. I said, hey, the school starts in two weeks. We need to straighten this up. I go up and I'm on this side, the school bus is sitting on that side with their stop signs and red, red blinking lights. There's kids waiting to go to school. It's just not fair. I mean, and it is not a personal issue. It's, I fought on behalf of all of us out there. Udo knows, Mr. Blenwinkle knows. It's very frustrating that they can put such little value on the people that men up there because they're huge.
Right.
They are huge.
Right. Um, we don't have a lot of options. That's why we're trying shotgun effect.
Well, one more thing.
Talk to them about breaking the trains. Talk to them about flashing lights. Talk to them about webcams because I want them to pay for some webcams, you know, out there. It's, you know, short of, of pulling up the side track, uh, we don't have, we have a limited amount of options here. I, you know, people talk about whether you can, um, call police, you know, on a blocked train. You know, those laws have gone back and forth and back and forth and from what I understand, yes, you can, but it's a, it's mixed results there. So, yeah, we're trying, we're trying several different avenues here. Yes, sir.
The county commissioner said to our meeting that afternoon, he entertained, he would entertain helping fund an alternate route if we could find someone that would sell the land that goes through the, uh, the police over here. And I even found out phone numbers and contacted the family and it's, it's a, it's a real struggle because there's about eight to ten siblings that own that and some of them are on board, some of them are not. Now, Rondo County could not commit to do too much, but he did commit. If we could get the land for a reasonable amount, Union Pacific said they would help. But the holdup was.
What, put a trust or?
The kids would not.
Well, they were talking about, is what happened was, we were looking at it, the guy in Houston with UP said, well, there's a road that goes from Gander Slough to Kingsbury on the north side of the track.
He calls it public.
Oh, yeah, it goes through the pasture there.
Yeah, it goes through, yeah.
It comes up beside the, uh, the county.
Yeah, that's my family's.
Right, our family's property. And then Seidenberger was saying, well, if we could acquire a lightaway along the railroad track through there, the county and UP would consider trying to build a road.
Oh, so you're talking about building a road through there.
Yeah, no, they won't.
Turn all the tracks so you aren't blocked.
Because you can still continue in the westward direction.
The way I get to know about the signals, I personally will go hold that dang thing up because there ain't gonna be no.
Since these crossings were typically open, that's what they had entertained. If we took that private road now, made it an extension of Gander Slough, then we would still have an exit. But nothing ever come of that. We never could get any traction from it.
Yeah, it was my grandfather's place and belongs to his family. I, and the, the track that goes through it, the road, it's just a two rut.
No, but that's not what he was talking about. He was talking about building a road.
Yeah, they were talking about. They're gonna be payroll maps and say, there's something there.
No, they're in.
They were talking about building a road.
Well, that would get you that direction, but it wouldn't get you the other direction.
But if you're going east, you're really not that far on your way. When you're going west, it takes, it takes twenty minutes to go around. And Woodrow Center is cluttered with animals on the road, children with livestock in the road. And I've ac- I've actually called the, the county insurance department and said, hey, you know, there's, there's three blocks and six kids in them. There's two pigs and a donkey. And we're having to reroute because we're blocked and I'm scared to death the kid's gonna get run over. We're gonna dodge a dog and run over a kid. And there's a little bit that's done from time to time, but there's not a lot. It's, it's just frustrating. You haven't lived out there with the side track. It is, Udo can vouch for it. It is, I mean, you'll pull your hair out. You can be having the best morning in the world and you'll have the worst day.
Well, we'll continue to, to push these different, they're not solutions, but.
Alternatives.
Uh, yeah, helpful.
Compromises.
Yeah, alternatives, you know, to, to that. Um, yeah, if we could get a flashing light, that would be helpful. If we could get them to break, that would be helpful. You get a webcam, that would be helpful.
We talked about doing a website that shows you, they put a cam up there. Udo and I talked about it, correct?
Yeah, that's one of the things I talked with Raquel about.
Hey, it's blocked right now, by the way. And before you go west on Gander Slough, just, you look at your phone.
Yeah.
I mean, my goodness, who needs something else to do it again?
Other than have a phone service that does work, doesn't.
Blake Burtling offered that we could put anything on his fence, anything on his entrance or his, you know, where he stood, a point there. But, uh, the, the lady there said that we could put cams there and, I mean, it's just, it's an ongoing deal.
It's ongoing.
There was about a year and a half there that it was just absolutely boring.
Yeah.
We could not go west on Gander Slough. Nine out of ten times, you could expect to be blocked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we'll, we're, we're continuing. We haven't stopped, we haven't stopped on this issue.
You're the mayor, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna hand off the number to Mike Soriano.
Yes, because I looked on the UP website and it's not on the community outreach site.
Ted Cruz, Kempole, when we reached out to everybody, we finally got an idea. But it, it didn't last long. And now we just, I don't have time to police it no more.
Yeah, I know. It's a, it's never ending, never stopping. So, you know, except the train. Except the train. All right, so we will, absolutely, we have not stopped on this. We will, we will continue to try and find, um, our, you know, one, two, any number of solutions to help. Nothing's gonna solve it, but at least we can try and find what we can to.
It's interesting to hear what Rex Pop has to say about the signage. So keep us updated.
Yeah, yeah. All right, item number, thank you. Thank you for being here. Item number eleven, discussing consider Clifford money designation.
Um, so, well, I guess, you know, again, we did have a deadline for them to make this decision and we're kind of waiting on the, the street, which you've gotten one response from. Um, but we need to have them, we need to have a plan by April, right?
Uh, we have to, um, by the end of the year, we have to.
Okay, so it's the end of the, it's December.
Yeah, I did, I looked into it and, uh, and I changed.
What's would be?
We have until the end of twenty twenty-six to designate money. But we have to designate it by the end of this year.
What are the options for the designation of the funds? Has that been decided? Cause I remember having this conversation recruiting ideas back in twenty twenty-one.
We came up with a decision and the ultimate decision that, um, all of us would like is to actually put everything on land that we own, but since we don't own any land, um, Shirley's trying to get one of the paper streets, you know, those, which we've discussed, those fake streets that don't exist, to see if we can use that to put everything on. Um, and, uh, I guess you've gotten a response from one, but not, there's three. So, and if.
And I'm, I'm not sure if we could do a deed without warranty without adjacent landowner.
What is the goal with the paper street?
Because then we could put a well.
I'll put a well, okay, for water. It'll be from the city, yeah.
Got it. That was the ultimate decision. Okay.
Yes. The county is going to grant the property to the city. Because it's always been county.
But it's surrounded by cities. So it's kind of, you know, but it's not a property owner. So it's, it's not like we can say that that's in the city because there's no property owner to it.
But I just heard that county is.
One of the things that I was looking at is, you know, if we did purchase some property, you know, certainly we can't purchase anything for the, what, thirty-six thousand that we have, but.
Is there anything available even? I don't think.
Yeah, there's.
I, I heard a rumor.
Yeah.
I don't know much about this, that school building here is owned by a private person.
Yes, it has.
This is right, right?
Yeah.
Descendants.
And Holly, a nurse from the hospital spoke to my wife at the hospital, telling that the owner of this property is a very generous person who most likely would be very, very.
When was this?
A week ago, two weeks ago. This is, this is what Holly, I guess it was Holly telling Deborah, I told Deborah, let's get that waste thing out of the way here and then we approach that one because, uh, the idea, we came up half a year ago, park and well, uh, that would be a perfect property. And the owner is a very generous person who might even be willing to donate.
So even if, oh, donate? Donate would be good. Yeah. But even if we had to, you know, purchase some property, you know, that may be something to.
Consider.
Yeah.
I mean, I vote that we kind of take this off the agenda because it's not really anything we can do about it yet until we, you know, uh, find out first about ideally this, this, see if we can get some free land. Wouldn't that be great? And, um, yeah. And then maybe just bring it up, I guess, closer to the, we'll be aware. And then maybe just bring it, I guess, closer to the, we'll, we'll be aware, I will.
Plus the ten thousand in back.
Maybe we could set as some kind of.
But the, yeah, but then the house on that is.
To come back to this.
So, you're looking at what, a pitfall for a hundred and fifteen thousand acres?
The, the one structure that's on it, is it still activated?
Big building.
Yeah, so exactly.
The city.
What's the size of that?
I mean, uh.
Five acres? For a hundred, for roughly a hundred and twenty for five acres? That's cute.
I know, but, you gotta.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 yeah, that part I get.
So, yeah.
Yeah, just internal, well, we'll just come back to it.
I mean, when you think about, Fire Department makes, when they make, they make a part.
The person is like, is in the jail right now, so.
One more thing.
Um, so, yeah, that may be an option also, I would pursue.
I think, I mean, I, yeah, I think we could probably take this off the agenda and just kind of re-bring it up if we haven't already figured all this out by October, and note to all of ourselves to put it back on the agenda if we haven't made.
Yep.
A decision.
All right. Item number twelve, discussing consider possible water leak, Kingsbury Road, Highway ninety, and this was one of the things that I was gonna bring up with.